Good evening. I'd like to call this Wednesday, May 10th, 2023 meeting of the City of Manassas Park Planning Commission to Order. The time is 7:00 PM. My name is Lester Finkel, sitting this evening are Martha Collier, John Evans, and Alana Mensing. First order of business is the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Mensing, will you lead us? Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call this Wednesday, May 10th, 2023 meeting of the City of Manassas Park Planning Commission to Order. The time is 7:00 PM. My name is Lester Finkel, sitting this evening are Martha Collier, John Evans, and Alana Mensing. First order of business is the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Mensing, will you lead us? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we're going to care to make a motion to approve the agenda as is.
So we move?
Motion, second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next agenda item is the adoption of minutes from our April 12th, 2023 meeting. I don't have any changes. Are there any changes from commissioners? Okay, seeing none, then I'll ask for a motion to adopt the meeting minutes as is from the April 12th, 2023 meeting.
Moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Are there any members of the public present this evening who wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Our two main agenda items this evening are two public hearings, which I will open one after the other, and then we'll go through the hearing. The first public hearing that I will open is rezoning RZ number 22-03 Downtown Development Phase Four, Artina Park. The time is 7:01. I will also open public hearing for the waivers, WAI number 22-03 A through G, and public facilities manual waivers, PFW number 22-03 A through D, and the time is 7:01. At this time, I'll ask for the applicant to come forward and state your name and affiliation for the record, and then please go ahead and make your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Carlos Montenegro.
If you could speak into the microphone. Okay.
Not that loud, huh?
That's okay.
Yeah, I'm Carlos Montenegro. I'm counsel for the applicant, and I have some handouts for you that are reflective of our presentations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so I need to look this through, Ricky. I got it. I think. There are others.
There used to be a screen.
Right here. This is where I'm at.
Okay, yeah.
Good thing I handed him out.
You have to push it over, like a second screen?
Is it a PowerPoint?
Yes.
Just, no, just hit the presentation.
Oh, that's interesting.
You only have to hit the presentation?
Just hit the presentation, and it'll pop up.
There you go.
Yeah.
There you go.
Great, there you go.
Thank you all.
You're gonna have to hold the mic, Carlos, too.
This one?
Yeah, make sure it's green.
All right, it's green. It's green, super green. Once again, I'm Carlos Montenegro. I'm attorney for the applicant. It's just, my background is, aside from being an attorney, I used to be a city planner. I have a master's in city planning out of UVA. I was a city planner with the county of Fairfax, and before that with Albemarle County for many years, before I became a bad guy lawyer. Anyway, so we've done this a few times, and one of the times is here. The project we're proposing is kind of like a PPO in that there's an awful lot of public presence in the whole, in the whole development scheme. The applicant is Artena LLC, and we have a contract with the city to acquire a portion of the property that you're going to consider tonight. That portion is a current parking lot that the Hasta people are supposedly using, but it's not being used. So we will be acquiring that property after zoning approval, and we will be building and providing them 150 parking spaces. Initially, surface spaces, and ultimately, possibly at full development, we'll build a parking structure for them. So let me go to the second. Good. Again, this is the contract with the city. We have, in our proposal, 400 apartments, mid to high-rise, and a total of 550,000 square feet, which would include a commercial building in what we call the third phase, which is next to Manassas Drive. As a part of this application, we're going to rebuild the streetscape along Manassas Drive all the way to the railroad. It's going to parallel and design what you have on the other side. It's the streetscape that the city has elected to have, and we're going to do that. We're going to take all the power underground. We're going to take down old power pole, light poles, and put the new ones that conform with your design schemes in place along Manassas Drive. We're going down to the railroad, but that's as far as we can go. That's all the property we have. We're also going to rebuild a portion of Connor Drive. Currently, it's, 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 I almost said substandard. It's substandard, but it's not a conforming design to VDOT standards. And we're going to build a half section of it on our side as fully conforming VDOT design with sidewalk, et cetera. We're going to rebuild the, what's the name of the street, Jeremy? No. Broad Alley, thank you. I knew I brought you for a reason. Broad Alley, I know it's being changed by name to Liberty or something, okay. Anyway, so we're going to rebuild that, so it's a fully functional, two-directional drive into our site and can spread out ultimately to Connor Drive to Euclid. The redesign of that will require a reconfiguration of the intersection with Manassas Drive. It's currently well below standard, and we're going to try to make it way more predictable and safer, hopefully. We have submitted a generalized development plan. I don't know, yeah, we can see this. Good. Let me point over here. The existing property is, has been industrial here, and here's that parking lot we're talking about. There's an old historical house, semi-historical house that's still there, right here. And you'll see this come into play with some of our sketches. But all of, currently Connor Drive comes here, and there's a easement that runs through here. Doesn't do anything, there's no road. It's just a driveway. So there are industrial buildings that are all going to be removed, obviously, as a part of this project. This is what we foresee as being our first phase of development. It would be somewhere between 200 and 240 apartment units in here. Some structured parking underneath. It's not a full podium building, and you'll see some illustratives that show you a little better. This is where the 150 spaces would go, under the deal with the city, for them. And it's essentially a malleable, if you will, definition of where these parking spaces will be, because as we develop the sites, we're going to have to do some swapping, but they will always have 150 next to them. And that's why the parking structure may come into play. This is, again, a little color, shows some of the perimeter with Manassas Drive. We've been asked to treat the area next to these ugly industrial uses. We are going to put a heavy landscape area in there and try to disimulate the appearance of those uses. We don't like them either. We don't, you know, we don't want an eight-story tenant having to look down on that stuff. This is the project with Phase Two. And again, this is a generalized development plan. It's not in final form yet. The buildings have had some design elements completed, but we're reserving the right to do some tweaking. Both of these buildings could have 200 units each. Both of them could be fully parked with structured parking underneath. The prettier picture is coming up. Okay, this shows you the two phases with a parking structure potentially there. It's our option to provide it. If we build enough structured parking under the buildings, it may not be necessary to build a parking structure here. It's all, obviously, it's going to be an evolution of site planning. Okay, this shows you the final stage, which would include some likely structure parking under a commercial building in this phase. So we would have surface parking feeding the commercial building with some structured parking in case we go up with it to four stories or so. It's not been designed. The architectural styles, we've proffered that we will adhere to these architectural styles, or at least the quality of them. You never know about colors. And one of them, one of these buildings has been designed as a prefab building, and I dare you to tell me which one. This is, this is Phase One. Again, this is showing a seven-story building with an entry notch in here, and this back area here is structured parking as currently designed. This gives you a view of the same building from the north. Once again, this whole area here is designed to be structured parking. And this, most of this enters off of Connor, actually, so in the current design. This is Phase Two, and this concept involves the old build, the old house, and acting as a, maybe as a clubhouse or a poolhouse for the pool that would be here notched next to the building. Connor Drive being right here. This is an elevation from the north side of this, of that same building. And you can see, oops, you can see the, there's an element of structured parking that comes in here as well as here. Some pretty night views. No use wasting the architect's work. Again, same thing, looking at it from the north. This is looking at it from Connor, from Connor Drive, from the ugly uses. And an elevation of Phase Two that shows the existing house, Connor House, and how that would work out in terms of elevations, et cetera. There's a lot of vertical going on over there. We've asked for some modifications, and basically, they allow us to be, to be efficient in our site planning. We don't want to have to deal with any minimum lot sizes, not that we would have any small lots. Lot widths and setbacks in accordance with the ordinances. Lot coverage not exceeding 90 percent. We're going to be well below that, but the minimum height for all structures, my engineer noted, we have a, we have a typo here. It's actually 20 feet what we're looking for, because we have that commercial building might only be 20 feet. And then reduction in parking based for the residential uses to 1.3 per unit. Now, these buildings will have all facilities regarding biking and trailing and all that kind of stuff. They're going to have all the parking inside the buildings. That's fully committed, and we really want it. And our building next door, we have an existing building, as you know, that one was their test for our parking efficiency in that area. And we had results there from 1.28 per unit to 1.12 per unit, depending on days. So we said, okay, we'll go with 1.3, and we'll be fully, fully parked, well parked. That's it. That's my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, have any questions? Mr. Mensing?
Will the Connor House be open to, will be accessible to the public, or will it just be for the residents?
Yes. Right now, what we're expecting is we're going to have to totally refurbish that Connor House to accomplish occupancy in it. It's, it's going to be quite a job, seven, seven-figure kind of job. So how we reconfigure it, for sure, it's going to be habitable, and to the extent that management desires to have it available on occasion for weddings and that kind of stuff, it'll be strongly considered, because we're not going to spend a million dollars refurbishing that thing without having a reasonable return on that investment.
Okay, thank you.
Just to add, if, if it's the will of the governing body, we can keep some of the historical sign information on kind of the public right-of-way pieces, just to highlight so people can at least see that and know what that structure is, at least the historical, the stones coming from, from the city and just being the oldest structure in the city.
Yeah, that'd be great. If it could just be viewed, it doesn't need to be entered, of course. Thank you.
Commissioner Collier? Maybe not? I can ask questions if you want to.
No, I'm going to do it. It's just that...
Your microphone, I'm sorry.
I have really mixed feelings on the use of the Connor House. That is a Civil War historical building, not to be used as a poolhouse. I have a, I, I, I'm sorry, people. I'm going to speak how I feel here tonight. That is a historical building. It's not to be desecrated in any way.
If I may?
And it, and, let me finish, please, because once I get started, it's hard to stop. That building has so much history, and if you go in there, your client, not you personally, it's, it's not directed at you, sir. If you go inside that building and refurbish it to modern day, I got a hard, a hard thing with that. It needs to be kept as it is. If you're going to, if you're going to spend that million dollars, bring it back to its natural state completely. No new stuff inside. Keep it in its historic, and if need be, apply for historic status and make it a permanent. I don't want to ever come back to the city and see it gone.
I need to chime in, because the city has already agreed to sell and permit the demolition of the Connor House. We already sold via contract to the Phase Four developer for that effort. They're voluntarily figuring out ways to at least keep the stone and the structure for historical purpose, because it's not just a Civil War historical building. It's actually the oldest structure for the city, so it has roots in terms of the stones themselves. But again, there's, from a rezoning, the city's already sold, entered into a purchase and sale agreement to give that land to the developer for the, for the development. They don't have to keep that building. They're actually taking that extra step to at least preserve the structure.
So in selling the building, you didn't have an agreement that it would be kept?
No, we did not. Yeah.
If I may, to try to make you, perhaps make you feel better about this. This design plan here shows a poolhouse with a pool and the, and the Connor House behind it, okay, freestanding. The biggest issue we have with the Connor House, aside from habitability from a design standpoint, is we've got to put fire lanes around it, and that really constrains how we build, how we develop our site. So we're still working it. We're, we're, Mr., I know Mr. Axolou is Artena. He's in favor of keeping it. So you got that, anyway.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I may, at this time, we, we received a written email regard with three comments in it. I understand that you were provided a copy of that. If I may, at this time, I'd just like to make sure it gets on the record and then afford you an opportunity to speak to comment number three in it, if you, if you wouldn't mind. This is from a Mr. Mark Scheffler, Manassas area resident, dated March, May 2nd, 2023. Manassas Park Planning Commission, please consider the following comments to rezoning RZ number 22-03 Downtown Development Phase Four, Artina Park. Number one, very supportive of the density near VRE Station downtown area. Number two, very supportive of what appears to be the preservation of the Connor House. And number three, one element missing from the project is what appears to be a lack of ground floor apartments or townhouses with private entrances opening directly to the street. The, the design appears to include a lot of blank space slash parking podiums on the ground level, which does not promote a sense of community outside of the buildings. The design should include the outward-facing concept that supports people walking past doors, stoops, porches, and more importantly, people. This makes the area safer by providing more eyes on the street. Ground floor units could be separate from the main building design and could provide other rental house types. Please consider this feedback for a more urban concept and not a semi-urban design. And then he has a link to an article below that. If you wouldn't mind speaking to the third one, would you, do you have a copy of it?
Certainly. No, I, I read it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You know, we have ground-level units at our apartments, existing apartments, and they're terribly different, difficult to rent, or even have occupied. The intention here is to have a project that is kind of a community. It's going to have pools. It's going to have some commercial in it as well. So we're, you know, the market isn't shy in beating us up if we don't do what it needs to have happen. But having townhouses facing Manassas Drive, well, the principal problem happens is, that we have, is that we don't have the 150 spaces for the existing commercial that isn't successful. So we're, you know, we're not going to put townhouses along there. We've committed to the city that we would put the parking in there to alleviate the problem with the existing centers. So that's, that's basically the answer for this.
If I could jump in real quick, I just want to point out that, that as Carlos has indicated, a lot of this is contractual between the city and Axolou. So there's not a whole lot of flexibility they have as far as the overall design.
Was that Dean?
Thanks, Dean. Yes, sir, that was Dean.
Thank you, Dean.
It is Dean, yes.
Unincorporal Dean. Good to hear from.
Thank you. Couple other questions I had from reading the report, which I know Administrator Barry will be speaking to. Just wanted, while you were speaking here, regarding the existing crosswalk on Manassas Drive immediately south of Broad Alley, will, will your company be taking care of removing that existing crosswalk?
We're actually building the whole reconfiguration of that.
Okay, so that'll be part of the removal and the reconfiguration?
Correct.
And I appreciate I heard you say about the, is that the design of the Connor Drive frontage using the VDOT Urban Street Standards that I hear you say that that would be at the time of the Phase Two Site Plan submission?
Yes, and we're happy to do that. We want to clean up our frontage and make sure that access to our buildings is good and solid. It may involve left turn lanes along Connor Drive.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And one other one, in the proffer, clarifying that the existing NOVIC streetlights will be removed and all existing utilities will be placed underground. I understood you to say underground.
Yes, and we showed all that in our GDP.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all depicted and noted, yeah.
Great.
We're doing that.
Thank you. Other questions from commissioners? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Administrator Barry?
Don't let me walk away with this. Do you want it?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Chairman. I am Michelle Berry, the zoning administrator for the City of Manassas Park. Just like to give you a brief presentation. Some of these images will be repetitive, so I'll go through those pretty quickly. Which one did you use to move the arrow, to move it? What, what do you use now? Close it. Uh oh, have to close one. Probably close that one. Uh, that, hit that one. Oh, perfect. Okay. Thank you, Laszlo. Okay. So let's move on. Okay, here's the location of the property. I know the applicant described it, but here's just an aerial overview. It is bound by Manassas Drive and Connor Drive to the south. There are a lot of industrial properties that are currently in use, so I believe staff and, and the rest of the city are happy to see that use change. So we, we are excited about that part of the application. Just from zoning, you can see that the property is zone PF and I-1. The PF is the city-owned parcel that was discussed earlier, and everything else is industrial. For the comprehensive plan, the future land use map calls this area, it's all in purple, the City Center Redevelopment District, which is our high-density mixed-use area. It's close to the VRE Station, and, you know, is one of these areas where we want to see a lot of commercial activity and residence and public spaces, as well as civic opportunities and areas for public entertainment in terms of festivals and meeting at the plaza that we have in front of our new city hall, which we're, of course... we have in front of our new City Hall, which we're, of course, in right now. And then the railroad is designated as public and utilities, which is the only really abutting or adjacent other land use category in the area. So Phase 1, as Mr. Montenegro described, is going to be a, the first apartment building, which will be in the middle of the site, and the 150 parking spaces. They are providing the requisite city center redevelopment streetscape. You'll see the parallel parking, the street trees, and can't see it too clearly, but there are light posts in between the trees. And I just wanted to focus on this area of the plan that, to show that they are doing improvements along Monassas Drive, making a left turn lane and then converting Broad Alley into a two-way direction that currently is a one-way, only accessing Monassas Drive. So it will be through traffic there and then dedicated right and left. So here's just an overview of the existing. I wanted to show this because they are, you can see that there is a ability to turn left here at Naylor Drive. And what this shows is this median will prevent that from happening. And so that will, I know we had some concerns about these left turn movements. If you've actually done them yourself, it can be a little bit of a weight. So I think this will assist with some traffic movement on Monassas Drive. And it just shows kind of the layout of what's going to come. Here's Phase 2. And this is kind of, this is certainly repetitive. There's the second building. I did want to highlight that the applicant is providing a lot of pedestrian connections along Broad Alley on the south. And then the first apartment buildings, there are sidewalks on both sides. As well as the second apartment building, there will be frontage there. There is actually existing crosswalk on both sides on Conner Drive, so that literally is a pedestrian connection now from Monassas Drive to Conner as part of this development. Staff are really happy to see that type of connection in our downtown. Phase 3 will include the commercial building. This proposed parking garage, forgot to mention that, is to happen with Phase 2. But this will be the full development, commercial in the front and the residential in the rear. You were already shown these elevations, so I'll just go through them real quickly. This is just showing the sides of the building. And I believe that is the, this is the side off of Broad Alley or Liberty Street, and this is the frontage on that private street that will front that building. We've seen this before. There's the Conner House and another, that's the rear elevation of Building 2, of Phase 2. We've seen this, the pool and the Conner House. This is looking at it from the front. And this is the main entrance to the parking garage, and we have here the principal entrance for the apartment building. And then this is just a longer view of the frontage of the apartment building for Phase 2. As mentioned by the applicant, they are requesting several waivers. Those are permitted under Section 31-33.2 of the zoning ordinance. Certainly, here's the list, and I can read everything out to you, but height of buildings, parking, buffers, landscaping, and then the residential percentage, which is applicable here to this application. Just to go over the waivers, there is an increase in the residential percentage to 100% from 75. Now, in total, it will be about 80% residential and 20% commercial, but the applicant wanted to make sure that with the phasing, that it's going to be 100% residential in Phase 1 and Phase 2, and still wanted to be compliant with the waiver. So it was requested to be increased to 100%, but if all three phases are developed, then that would certainly be reduced down to 80% residential. They are increasing the impervious coverage to 90% from 75. That is the figure that we received for the application. I'm happy to hear it's probably less than that. So we are still kind of looking for some amenities and landscaping plans that we can see to ensure that they're offsetting the impervious surface coverage with at least some type of amenities, outside amenities for the residents. Reducing the minimum height to 20 feet, that could be applied to the proposed parking structure in the front, as well as the commercial building. And as mentioned, they are doing a reduction to the parking rate, and Mr. Montenegro mentioned the parking study that they did, which is why they came to the proposed 1.3 spaces. Parking lot landscaping, these are typical waivers. This were exactly requested with the Phase 3 downtown. These are landscaping islands and ensuring there's a green space within the parking lots. I'm sure you're aware that this is more of a suburban model, so we typically waive this to get a little more density and, you know, compactness to the development instead of having all these green areas. And then lastly is the screening. Typically, this is for, it is mentioned that there is screening along the southern property boundary. I would note in the zoning ordinance, if the plan calls for the abutting property to be in the same future land use district, then the actual screening isn't necessarily, isn't required. And I believe the applicant made a good point where, since the buildings are going to be so tall, you're probably going to see, the residents will see the industrial properties anyway. But we still would like to see what type of landscaping they're doing, as well as we are concerned about visual screening from Monassas Drive. Any, because of the angle of the properties, it is possible to see a lot of vehicles, so we just want to ensure that that is screened, and so we have a nice view from Monassas Drive. The public facility manuals all deal with private streets. First is modifying the street width to a minimum of 24, exceeding 700 vehicles per day, revising the sidewalk requirements to one side of the street, and removing the prohibition on residential frontage. Again, these were similar to the Phase 3, where we did modify all of these, with the exception of the first one, where we did request that they be reduced to no less than 26 feet. And we're standing by that same recommendation for this application. So just to evaluate this application based on the comprehensive plan, we looked at the City Center Redevelopment District, as well as the Transportation Chapter and the comprehensive plan. And just some points about what we're looking for and what the guidance is, is we're looking for a mixed use of commercial, retail, and residential. We want consolidation of parcels for an integrated development, and the applicant is consolidating five parcels, so that certainly is, meets the intent of the comprehensive plan in that regard, and as well as the mixture of residential and commercial. We're looking for a modern town center, and I believe that the architetchuals do reflect that in our downtown, and trying to get a modern vibe or activity vitality there for our city center. It is looking for also some public and private open space and recreation. And of course, we want the commercial activity with pedestrians being in the downtown at various times a day, including the nighttime, and also providing adequate parking, which the applicant touched upon earlier. And then just for transportation, we do have some sections in the Transportation Chapter that talk about new roadway connections, especially between Conner Drive and Monassas Drive, pedestrian connectivity, which this application certainly does a very good job at, within the downtown, creating these new sidewalk connections. And the CIP is actually a component of the comprehensive plan with their capital improvement program. We do have a future roadway development that's called Conner Drive Extension South, and that is why we are requesting design of the VDOT Urban Design Standards. We do intend to get another connection directly from Conner to Monassas Drive, maybe, well, it would be south of the tracks. So we are seeking design of that, their portion of Conner Drive, so we can use that for the future design for that ultimate connection. And parking has always been a concern throughout the city, and certainly this application is no different. And they are trying to juggle some parking availability issues we have in the downtown, as well as just addressing, you know, parking for their site in general. Here is the Conner Drive Extension South CIP project page. Just to kind of remind you, we did go over this a few months ago, and so this is, we're trying to get additional connections into the downtown. And we do see this as a critical opportunity and roadway connection to facilitate traffic throughout the downtown and within the city. So here's a slide about consistency with the comprehensive plan. I kind of went over these in my presentation. We are, there is certainly a mixture of residential and commercial. There is compact development, urban streetscape, and modern elevations of the apartment buildings, which fits into the community design in the City Center Redevelopment District. They are showing some out, open space and recreation. We would like the applicant to at least provide a little more detail on that, and I'll go over that in my recommendations. And then they are providing several transportation improvements, which are improving the intersection at Broad Alley and Monassas Drive, sidewalk connections throughout the development, and they are dedicating right-of-way for Conner Drive, because actually some of it's not public right-of-way, it's a city-owned property, and so that dedication will assist the city is just dedicated right-of-way. So as part of this application, we are recommending approval, and I do believe the applicant has committed to these issues, but at the time of the staff report, we would like to have them provide a design of the Conner Drive frontage using VDOT Urban Street Standards and submit that as, at the time of the Phase 2 site plan submission. Remove the existing crosswalk on Monassas Drive immediately south of Broad Alley. I believe they have committed to doing that. And then clarify that the existing NOVAC streetlights would be removed and utilities would be placed underground. The proffer language was just a little unclear to me, but I just wanted to make sure that that was what we were getting, because the streetscape and that street view is very important, and we like to have that visual clutter removed. So for the waivers, we are requesting and recommending approval of these following ones, which is the increase for the amount of residential, reducing the parking to 1.3 spaces, modifying the parking lot landscaping, as shown on the general development plan. We are comfortable with the 700 vehicles per day on private streets, as well as sidewalks on one side, and allowing residential frontage on the private streets. So with the waivers that we would like some more clarification or commitment on, by the applicant, is we did see elevations, but we didn't see it for each of the structures. So we are asking a staff to make sure that architectural elevations are provided for all buildings, subject to review and approval of the zoning administrator. And the same with open space and recreation plan. Given there is limited open space, although we don't know the extent of that, since it's probably not going to be 90%, we still would like to see what the applicant is proposing in terms of recreation. You saw a pool on one of the renderings. We just want to make sure each building has a pool and that there are dedicated areas for dog walking, and there's pet waste stations, and maybe some benches going in that will make this a little more friendly in terms of walkability and, you know, making a nice residential area for the residents in the apartment buildings. Similar to that, the landscaping and screening, we are concerned about that. The applicant did point out in the back corner next to Monassas Drive and the screening of the properties to the south, but we would like to see a detailed plan on how that's going to happen. And then lastly, as I previously mentioned, they did request a reduction in the private street to 24. I know our fire marshal wants the width to be no less than 26 feet, so we are requesting that the waiver be modified to 26 feet as opposed to 24. And I'll just leave with the overview of all three phases, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from commissioners for Administrator Barry? Don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question real quick before she leaves. This is Dean again.
Go ahead, Dean.
So up there, Mickey, you say that Broad Street, which is going to be called Liberty Street later, is two-way, but it only shows one way on this rendering, I think. I mean, I don't, it does, I may be wrong, but I just want to make sure that that's a two-way reference there.
Yes, it is. There's one coming in, there's the turn lane off of Monassas Drive, and then there's a right turn lane and a left turn lane exiting Broad Street.
Yeah, I see that. I just didn't see the arrows going in there, but that's just you.
Oh, well, right.
That's my only question.
That wasn't, you mean into Broad Street? That wasn't shown on the rendering, but you can kind of deduce that from the left turn lane shown.
I got you, I just want to make sure.
Yep, no, very good.
Thanks.
Administrator Barry, Commissioner Collier has a question.
I do have a question. On the parking in Phase 1, 150 spaces, and then possibly changing in Phase 2 to a parking garage, it kind of doesn't make any sense to me to put it off. If you're going to do it, would it be more cost-effective to do it in Phase 1 instead of waiting? I mean, I don't know what the timeframe would be, but why would you not go ahead and do it instead of waiting?
Sorry. Thank you. We're trying to maximize our flexibility in phasing here, and the one commitment we did make is to provide 150 spaces up here. The reason we wouldn't put a parking structure is, it costs about $3 million to do that initially, and there's actually no need to do that if we structure parking. initially, and there's actually no need to do that if we structure parking, park these two buildings, okay? So if we put structures underneath, we can put the 150 here on surface until we build the commercial, and then we have to build that, okay? So we're, it's a matter of dollars and phasing.
Well, there again, if you wait, would it be not more expensive if you waited?
Not really, no, because we're spending money on that, that we would be spending like $3 million on that garage, that we don't have to, and the debt service on $3 million over time would exceed the additional cost of construction at a later date. So we've done this analysis extensively. It doesn't make any sense to provide it upfront.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. I don't see any other questions there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any members of the public present either, just want to say that for the record. So if we have no other questions from commissioners, then I'll go ahead and, is the applicant satisfied? No other comments?
I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much, we appreciate you being here this evening. Then at this time, I will ask for a motion to close public hearing rezoning RZ number 22-03 Downtown Development Phase 4, Artina Clark.
So moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. I will also ask for a motion at this time to close public hearing waivers, WAI number 22-03A through G, and public facilities manual waivers, PFW number 22-03A through D.
Moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Unless anyone would like to begin discussion, I can offer, I have all for two motions. The first motion will be regarding the rezoning. So if, without further ado, I will offer that the planning commission recommend to the governing body approval of rezoning RZ number 22-03, and the applicant has committed to the following. Number one, provide a design of the Connor Drive frontage using VDOT Urban Street Standards at the time of the Phase 2 site plan submission. Number two, remove the existing crosswalk on Manassas Drive immediately south of Broad Alley. And number three, clarify is that the existing NOVEX streetlights will be removed and all existing utilities will be placed underground. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. The second motion I will offer, the planning commission recommends to the governing body approval of waivers, WAI number 22-03A, D, E, and F, and public facilities manual waivers, PFW, numbers B through D, as well as the remaining waivers as follows. Recommend approval of waiver, WAI number 22-03B, subject to the submission of architectural elevations by the applicant for the standalone parking structure, as well as the commercial building and associated parking garage, with final review and approval by the zoning administrator. Recommend approval of waiver, WAI number 22-03C, subject to the submission of an open space and recreation plan by the applicant, with final review and approval by the zoning administrator. Recommend approval of waiver, WAI number 22-03G, subject to the submission of a landscaping and screening plan by the applicant, with final review and approval by the zoning administrator, and recommend, recommend approval of waiver, PFW number 22-03A, provided the width of private streets is reduced to no less than 26 feet. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. You're welcome. No unfinished business from the last meeting, and no report of special committees. Informational update from community development staff. Administrator Barry?
Thank you. Just wanted to let you know we have some developments on the horizon, even just abutting Manassas Park, that vacant property at the corner of Manassas Drive and Signal Hill Drive. They are proposing some, I believe, two over two townhomes, we're having a traffic impact analysis meeting on that tomorrow, so, and I think they want to have an exit that is directly across, I think it's, no, it's Christopher Place, where the Belmont Station townhomes have an access off of Manassas. So we'll be looking at that, that certainly will have some impacts at the city, so we'll be reviewing that and providing our recommendations to Prince William. And we do have some other potential developments, as was discussed in previous meetings, we have Popeyes, who is going to be doing the development on, off Manassas Drive, and I'm forgetting the name of the street there, I guess it's Connor Drive on that side, too.
Route 28 and Connor, you said.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, I meant Centerville Road and Connor Drive. So that will be a submission. I've had at least initial contact with the applicant on that property. So there might be some other activity within the city as well, but once I receive that information, I will let you know of that proposal as well.
Questions from commissioners?
And I have something to add, too, just a note on Phase 3, an update for Phase 3, which you approved for the rezoning. So Norance Scott has struck a deal with a movie theater called B&amp;B, so that announcement's on our website, so that's going to move forward, that's of course pending site plan approval of Phase 4, which you were discussing tonight. Once that gets site plan approved, then they have the legal ability to begin construction of the theater.
Great, thank you. Questions from commissioners on that?
I have a question. When will tonight's action go to the city council?
Well, I believe it's going to be June, the second meeting in June. I'm not going to be here, and I don't think I'll be able to make the advertisements and everything for the first meeting. So, yeah, it should be, I don't have a calendar in front of me.
June 20th.
June 20th. Is, is that okay? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion, second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? No? Motion carries unanimously, the time is 7:57.
Hi, everybody.
Good night, Dean.